Well, then, good evening, everyone. I will call the August twelfth work session to order and request a little public.
Mr. Newmaw?
Here.
Mr. Bush?
Here.
Ms. Kalamazki and Vice President Darrow are absent. President McCall?
Here. Please stand to the left.
Our allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting agenda, any additions or corrections?
No, thank you.
With none, could I get a motion for approval, please, again? So, Mr. Bush, second, Mr. Newmaw. We'll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Newmaw?
Yes.
President McCall?
Yes.
That takes us to discussion items. Our first item tonight is a technology plan. I'll take it.
Thank you, President McCall. And I'd like to invite Mike Boss, the Director of Technology, over to present the technology update for the Board of Education in our community. Mr. Boss?
Mr. Sauer, this is President McCall, members of the board. I just want to take a few minutes tonight to talk about our updated technology plan. So, the plan covers starting in the school year 2019 through the 2022 school year. Just want to talk about a little bit of background, the process we went through, and then our goals for the plan. So, just some background. So, we did, three years ago, create what we called a technology roadmap. So, this is kind of where, what they were called a roadmap because we wanted to see where we are and where we want to go. And we use this diagram which we're looking at as that, as that map. And the important part of this diagram is that foundation, the infrastructure and support. So, the last three years, we've spent a lot of time, energy focusing on improving, updating the infrastructure and support that we have in the district. We've added, we've replaced the Wi-Fi in all the buildings. We've tripled our bandwidth over the last three years. We've replaced servers. We've upgraded our virtual server environment. We've added over three hundred security cameras across the district. So, a lot of time, effort, money has been spent on really getting that infrastructure solid because you can see on our roadmap diagram that without that solid infrastructure, nothing above it is going to work. Without that basis, that foundation, then we struggle with everything above it. We also focused on, especially the last couple of years, devices that we had in classrooms. We added a lot of Chromebooks to support online testing over the last few years. We've replaced staff computers, and then recently, most recently, replaced the classroom A V setup. And so, we've done a lot of device updates over the last few years. And again, that wasn't possible without first addressing the infrastructure, getting that up to speed. But then also software. So, with new devices comes new software. Computer software is pretty much the same as updating that. But we have added several other online systems that teachers can log into. We've made our learning management system, School G more robust. We've integrated things a little better. But then with the addition of iPads last year for students, obviously, we have a lot of apps they can use to be a little more creative, a little more collaborative in their learning experiences. So, lots of things we've done over the last three years was based on that roadmap we created in 2016. So, we're at the place now where we're at a good, solid foundation in the software, device, and infrastructure. We can really focus on the learning and teaching. So, we can really focus on what's going on in the classrooms. And that's a lot of what this plan deals with, in addition with the other parts of the, of the roadmap. So, that's just a little bit of the background. We've heard we talked about that in the past. And again, that was done in 2016, and we spent three years working on those things. So, the planning process. What we did this spring, we got a group of teachers, administrators, support staff together, and we met five, or five times over five weeks. And we had a lot of discussions about what we, what we wanted to see in our classrooms when it comes to the learning and teaching and the use of technology. So, we started with our beliefs. So, beliefs are based on what we have experienced, what we've observed in our, in our lives, in our professional life and personal life. They're not necessarily based on fact. They're just what we believe based on our experiences. So, you can imagine, a large group of people, when you're talking about what you believe in terms of learning and teaching and technology, you get a lot of things listed there. So, we spent weeks just going through this list and kind of pairing it down to something manageable. You can see in the handout you have the beliefs that are outlined there. From the beliefs, then we looked at our values. So, values are a little more abstract. They're bigger than beliefs. Our values are based on our beliefs. They're not as concrete, and they, except they, they stem from our belief system. So, we talked about our values, what we value in terms of learning, teaching, and technology. Then we talked about behaviors. The behaviors that we see in our classrooms with students and teachers are all stemmed, they all stem from our values. So, when you look at someone's behavior in a classroom, and you look at their behavior with technology, you can tell what they value. So, your values lead to your behaviors. So, we spent a lot of time just talking about those things of what we believe in, what we value, and then what types of behaviors that we want to see when it comes to learning and teaching. So, you've got the list in front of you in the handout, but I'll have like just a few of our beliefs because these, these really have to do more with learning and teaching than technology specific. But for example, we believe that the use of technology should be intentional, focused, and purposeful. So, in other words, we don't want teachers to use technology just for the sake of using technology. That doesn't help the learning process. It should be intentional and focused. We believe technology is a tool, not a learning outcome. So, just like papers, pencils, crayons, chalkboards are tools that are traditionally better in classrooms, now technology is just one more tool that we can put in the classroom and help the learning process. But it itself is not a magic bullet. A hammer doesn't automatically pound a nail. A hammer is a tool to accomplish something. Technology is a tool to accomplish something in the classroom. So, we believe that technology is a tool, not a learning outcome. We believe learning how to effectively use technology is critical for our students' future success in life. So, the world we live in today is very technology-based. Just being exposed to technology, using it in a productive way helps our students in their future. And you can see there's other beliefs in there. Some have to do with supporting staff, some have to do with the, just the IT infrastructure, the network speed, and those things. So, those are the things, again, we have a long list of beliefs, and these are then pared down to, these are the most common ones, the most important ones that we felt as a group. Then those led us to a discussion about our values. So, again, values are based on our beliefs. They're more abstract or kind of broader in concept, and they, they lead to our behaviors. So, some things that we value, a supportive collaborative learning culture, intentional purposeful learning experiences, we value digital wellness, we value quality professional development, a lot of other things that are in there. But those were, looking at our list of beliefs, then we decided that these were the common threads in there. These were our values when it comes to learning, teaching, and just the general use of technology in our school district. So, from the values, then we, we go to our vision. So, you can imagine, again, we have thirty-ish people working together over five weeks. We've got this long list of beliefs, long list of values, and we need to come, we need to pare it all down to one vision statement. So, again, this is a lot of conversation, more of the critical words, how do we summarize these weeks of conversations? So, the vision statement we came up with. Our learning community supports a healthy environment that embraces authentic, creative, and collaborative learning both inside classrooms and beyond. So, one thing to note about our vision statement, it doesn't have the word "technology" in there, and that was intentional. And we talked a lot about that because we really felt, again, one of our core beliefs was technology is just a tool, not a learning outcome. So, we really wanted the vision to be about learning and teaching. We really wanted it to be about the experiences our students and teachers have, and technology is just a means to get there. So, this is really as much of a learning and teaching vision statement as it is a technology vision statement. Because that's, again, that's the whole reason we put technology in schools is to enhance learning and teaching, not just to use technology, not just to have and say, we're one-to-one with iPads. It's what are we going to do with it? So, we took the vision a little bit further, a little bit like our statement of purpose as a district, and we defined some things. Because a lot of things, when you start to put in, you know, catchphrases or words in there, they can be taken a lot of different ways. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone was on the same page with our, our definitions and those terms. So, you can see we define the learning community. It's the New Albany, it's our students, teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, local and global partners. So, it is everybody involved with our students and teachers in the classroom. Support, it's the resources to professional development, the funding to achieve the vision. So, support means a lot of things, both fiscally and kind of manpower, coaching, teaching both our teachers and our students. Healthy, we, we define that as socio-emotional, physical, digital wellness. So, a lot of focus on socio-emotional learning in our district, and we need to also focus on the physical and the digital wellness as well going forward. Authentic, obviously, it's going to be a relevant learning experience. Creative, we talked about solving problems in unique ways, designing original products, allowing learners to express their creativity. Collaborative, helping each other to grow by working together. And classroom is an easy one. It's the classroom, physical space in our buildings. Then beyond is everything outside the classroom. So, we wanted to have that in there, learning both inside and outside the classroom, because learning shouldn't stop when you leave the room. Learning should be a continual process. It should continue at home, it should continue with your friends, you continue on sports, the athletic field. Learning is beyond the classroom. So, we wanted to make sure that that was included in there. So, our vision statement, pretty simple in terms of number of words in one sentence, but the definitions kind of add a little bit more meat to that by making it clear what we mean in the vision statement. So, from there, we, we set our goals. So, keep in mind that we're studying the vision statement. So, vision isn't defining where we are today. The vision is where we want to be by 2020. So, in order to get, in order to achieve our vision, we have to set some goals. So, these goals are over the course of three years. They're not going to all be done by the end of this year, they're not going to all be done by the end of the next year. But by the end of 2022 school year, we should hopefully accomplish all of our goals. And if we do, then we believe that we have achieved our vision. So, first goal, maintain information technology infrastructure that's able to support a one-to-one learning environment. So, we need to keep our eye on the ball, make sure that our network is robust, make sure our bandwidth is capable of handling things, make sure that our systems are talking to each other. We need to make sure that that base and the foundation stay is solid, and we don't let that just wither over time. Goal two, provide opportunities that help all administrators, teachers, support staff, develop their skills to work more effectively and efficiently through the use of technology. So, we want to focus on, on the staff. We want to make sure they know how to use all the new tools that we have. If they know how to use it, they know what we're able to translate that and transfer it to the students. And then goal three, we want to raise awareness for the need to develop a balanced and healthy digital lifestyle. So, more and more in this world, the more technology we get in the, in the hands of the students, it becomes more critical that we teach them that balance, that digital wellness side of things. It's the, just because you can doesn't mean you should, and the talent we need to get in front of them. So, those are our three goals. So, by themselves, they're, they're very broad. So, we broke those down with action steps. So, goal one has several action steps to it. Again, I would go through all the details of these, and I guess one thing to keep in mind with some of these action steps, we, we actually finalized the, the process back in the spring, so in May. So, some of these action steps that I'll, I'll show you, goal one specifically, we've already done this summer. They're on our plans, and we accomplished them already. So, the first action step, create a, a projected budget over the next three years. So, that's where we'll work with the Treasurers Department to see where's our five-year forecast, what's it look like, what can we afford. And those are things that we've talked about in the past by one-to-one plan. We've already budgeted for that, we're already planning for it. It's just revisiting that and making sure that, that we're not missing something, and that we stay fiscally responsible. Upgrade the wireless at the primary school. That was actually done this summer. It was one of the things we did this summer. Add a second ISP. Again, that was another thing we did this summer. That just gives us a little more redundancy in case one provider goes down, and we can stay online with the other provider. Update the web filter and monitoring system, so we've got plans for doing those things. Do a security audit. We actually went through the audit in early summer. Now, we're at the point of looking at the recommendations and seeing what we can do in the short term and long term to beef up our security, our cybersecurity. Implement offsite backup disaster recovery, continuity of services, and provide training and resources for the IT staff. So, goal one is more of a IT goal, again, to keep the, the base, the foundation solid so things can move on. And you can see, we got the action steps listed, and then how we're going to measure the success of that action step. So, this just becomes our department goals over the next three years. And again, some of those we've already started, some have been accomplished already, and some we've got plans to move forward in the future. So, goal one, more IT. Goal two is provide opportunities to help the administrators, teachers, support staff develop their skills. So, this is a lot of professional development. Again, from the technology department's standpoint, we focus on the professional development of our staff because then they transfer those skills to the students. So, we don't directly involve, the department isn't directly involved with the students. We're involved, the staff, and then we help them transfer their skills to the students. So, again, I won't read through all the details of these, but you can see our action steps, starting with a needs assessment. So, it's one thing to offer professional development, but it's also, it's another completely different thing to offer it on what they need. So, we can provide a needs assessment survey and decide where, where do we need to target our professional development for staff so they can get the skills that they need. Provide professional development specific to a one-to-one environment. So, just using technology is different than teaching in a classroom that's one-to-one. It's a, if you ask teachers that have been through it, they'll, they'll tell you that it's just a different world when the kids all have the devices. Professional development, our, and our elements, our learning management system. Look to see if we can purchase professional, some third parties to come in and offer, deliver professional development. And then do some online PD, and then look at the possibility of hiring two or more technology coaches. So, obviously, that has to fit within our staffing plan. Those are conversations that have to happen, but it's something that we thought as a committee we need to at least explore. Then goal three was to raise awareness of a healthy digital lifestyle. So, this is where we want to create a digital wellness framework. And we actually started working with this, working with several other central high school districts and W O S U, formerly ISCO, to develop this digital wellness framework. But along with that, we want to develop resources, resources for administrators, teachers, students, and parents that they can use to help raise awareness and to help reinforce a healthy digital lifestyle with our students. So, again, all of our action steps have measurements of success with them, and we'll just go through those and see what we can accomplish each year, and, and hopefully, then by the end of the 2022 school year, we've accomplished our goals by achieving our action steps. And at that point, we believe that we would have achieved that vision that we set for learning and teaching with technology in our school district. So, this time, we invite any questions, comments?
Thanks for the presentation, Michael. I had a, I did have a question about, and I see that you had a really great group of parents and teachers and administrators involved.
Yeah, so the, so the parents weren't involved back in the committee work, but we did, we invited them, what in our draft, the plan, to give us feedback. And then I actually reformat and reworked the plan after the feedback, and then we did some digital back and forth with parents.
Okay. My, my question is really around goal number two and the, the training that you have offered during the summer, maybe will offer going forward. Is the tech, is it the technology training in terms of how you use the technology, or is it also integrated with the delivery of curriculum in the context of the new technology? Because I think that's what I hear from parents, is we use more technology, transfer it one-to-one. Are we getting the same content to our students? Is it better, is it working better? Do our, do our teachers need more training, have we offered enough training? And I guess so is my question is around.
So, the answer is both. So, when we deployed the new devices to teachers, so when we handed the iPad Pro as the teachers, we did device-specific hardware, software training. Here's how you use this app, here's how you use this. So, that's more of the trip, what I would call training of how to use certain things, just so that they're able to function with the device. And then the summer, we offered close to twenty different workshops, and those were more how to apply it in your classroom. So, you know how to use the iPad, you know how to use this app or that app, but how are you going to apply it so that your students are using it in a productive, relevant way? Because we do want, like, like our beliefs and values said, we do want the use to be productive, relevant, all of those things. And a lot of the emphasis was on that PD, that professional development about applying it, is sometimes no technology is the right answer. So, it just depends on what you're trying to accomplish that day with the students, and don't force the technology in where it doesn't need to be forced in. So, so it's a little bit of both. It is the device and software specific, but then also, how are you going to apply it with your third graders, seventh graders, ninth graders?
Follow, follow up to that, because it was one of my questions too. How are, how do we, how are you determining, or what's the process for determining the effectiveness of the digital devices in the classroom? Maybe that's not necessarily a question for you, but for others. But how, how do we know that using the technology is working?
Yes, we, we have done surveys with both students and staff through, we did a baseline last year about the, the use of technology from the students' standpoint. And then I think the plan is to follow up to see from there what, what changes we see, changes in both attitude with technology and just the use and the practical use of it. But I think it's important to note that, that technology is not a magic bullet. It's not going to make us the best district out there. It really does come down to that application from the student and teacher perspective. And it, you know, looking at it from that lens of, it is just another tool that we're making available, and that tool can do a lot with us. It's not a magic bullet. It, it has to be intentional, purposeful, it has to be relevant. So, those are the conversations we're at at this point. I think last year, I think to the credit of the teachers that were one-to-one last year, they used technology a lot, but I think they, I think they were so excited about it, used it maybe too much. And that's where we're at now, where, let's just take, take a step back and let's say, is this focused, relevant, purposeful use? And if so, then they keep going. If not, then let's, let's make the best lesson that we can with or without technology.
Do you, you mentioned training. I, I, it refreshes my memory with our, with, with the purchase contract of the iPads, isn't there some ongoing training available for people?
Yep. So, both last year and this year included in our purchase with the Apple devices, there are thirty-four days of professional development provided by Apple. So, they come in, and it's a variety of things. They'll work with administrators to kind of see what their goals are. They'll work with departments or grade levels or small groups to train them on just different things. But then they also work with individual teachers to create lesson plans and actually are in the classroom with them while they're teaching and working with the kids. So, it's a variety of things. So, last year and this year, we both have thirty-four days from Apple.
Michael, we did a community survey earlier in the year, and we had the results for your committee. Was there anything that jumped out at you as part of that survey that worked its way into your, your?
I think a lot of it, a lot, a lot of concern about screen time. So, I think that's where our digital wellness, where we really want to focus on raising the awareness. And it's, we use the word raise awareness versus try to accomplish because a lot of it is kind of out of our hands. It's like the home life, the individual students. But raise awareness of digital wellness. So, what is good screen time versus bad screen time? Just sitting and vegging on Netflix, not so productive. But reading a book on the iPad versus reading a hard copy, doing something instructionally creative on the iPad, those would be good uses of screen time that cognitively can help the students develop versus just the passive sitting and consuming that device. So, that was one thing that came through in the survey a lot, was the, the concern about screen time. So, I think we can hopefully address that with our digital wellness goal. I think other uses were just, I think Mr. President McCall mentioned, just the amount of use, not necessarily the screen time, just using it for everything. And that's where we have to go back to, that purposeful and intentional use of it, not just, we have it, let's use it every day, all day.
One quick foundation, like, go back to the foundation. And I'm just curious, I mean, obviously, a, a network like we have here is much different than, you know, just getting your internet plugged in at home. But with, with the, I, I know, I think in certain parts of New Albany already, you have AT&amp;T coming in with fiber, so they got one gig coming through, right? So, speeds increase, that doesn't necessarily mean that there's more available bandwidth, that it's faster.
Right.
But what are some of the, I guess, concerns that you might have about just the way that technology is advancing and growing and the ability to kind of keep up with that? Yeah, obviously, you're planning for it, but anything that, that is something that may actually not be something that you can plan for in the budget?
We'll plan for everything, which is no surprises in technology at all. Yeah, I, I think, I think bandwidth is kind of always the unknown. You know, when I was at my previous district, ten years ago, we had fifty, fifty gigabyte, no, fifty megabytes of megabits per second of bandwidth. So, here, we have fifteen hundred megabits per second of bandwidth. So, in the course of ten years, a district that was four times the size of New Albany had fifty. New Albany today has fifteen hundred. Bandwidth use is just, it just, it surprises you because we think we plan for it. We have, like I said, fifteen hundred now, we had a thousand last year. I think we're going to be good, but if we stream more digital content, if more stuff is online, we could be surprised with just the amount. And that's where designing the network was, two ISPs designing it so that we can maybe control the traffic, or prioritize this over that. Then we can survive until we can afford to increase it. I think bandwidth is always going to be unknown there. The other thing, in our district, we have a ten gigabit per second fiber network, our own, own fiber, but it's not the fiber that's necessarily the problem, it's the endpoints, it's what it's connected to. So, our switches, our routers, those have one gigabit connections. So, it's ten gigabit fiber, but it's a one gigabit connection. So, now we're getting to that point where if we maxed out our fifteen hundred, our one gigabit connections aren't going to handle all that traffic. So, it's just looking at those things, upgrading endpoints to ten gigabit endpoints. Possibly, there is some fiber updates we have to do. It's just, it's twenty years old. We need to look at different ways of doing it. No, thank you. Yeah. Good? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next, we welcome Dr. Mias. Dr. Mias is going to talk about a transition for upcoming school year related to the state department for assessment.
Good evening. Welcome back. Schools pop in today. Was in the building, and it was a lot of fun. So, get to see the teachers and get to welcome back the students on, on Thursday. My own child goes back to school on Wednesday, and it's my, excuse me. Just want to give you an update about college entrance exam and an assessment update. So, the state of Ohio requires districts to provide a college entrance exam to all eleventh graders during, during their spring, their eleventh grade year. An interesting fact, Ohio is the only state that requires a college entrance exam that gives districts a choice. So, in Ohio, as a district, we get to choose between ACT and SAT. There are three states around us, Michigan, Indiana, and West Virginia. They are all required to give a college entrance exam in their junior year, but the state chooses for them, and all three of those states give every junior the SAT. So, when we start to look at our options, we start to, to think about, what is our long-term goal? Why, why do we choose the ACT? Is the ACT the best fit for New Albany? So, when we look at new assessment planning, we really start with these three basic questions. What is the purpose of our assessment? How are we using the assessment? And what is our long-term goal? And we use this process no matter what the assessment we're using. For example, in the middle school, end of seventeen eighteen, we really looked at map testing. And we said, what is the purpose? All three assessments, fall, winter, spring. We said, how are we using our data? How are we using that assessment data? It came down to our spring assessment. We weren't using that data at all. It was a time that we're giving the test, but we weren't using it to guide instruction. We weren't using it to pull interme- We weren't using it to pull intervention. So it was one of those decisions that we made that is this the best assessment for our particular students that spring? So we backed off on the number of times we offered the math assessment for the middle school, using this kind of process with these three questions. So when we look at this college entrance exam and our choice between ACT and SAT, we really want to say, what is the purpose? When you look at ACT and SAT, they've both been modified over the years. They really have the same goal in mind. They have the same purpose, which is a prediction for how a student will do in their freshman year. So if a student scores a college readiness benchmark, whether it be on the ACT or the SAT, there is a seventy-five percent prediction that they will earn a C or higher in that freshman level class. So when you look at these ACT, SAT, the purpose is really the same. And so we have to give one, so what makes the difference? Why choose one over the other? And it really comes down to this idea of how are we using our assessments? And this is really where the ACT and the SAT starts to diverge in how we're able to use the information that we get from the ACT or the SAT. We give the ACT to juniors, we've given it the last three years, typically in February or March. Scores come back in April or May, it's back to the district, they come back sooner to the students, we get them after the students do. And then it's the end of their junior year, they're applying for colleges come September, we may or may not be able to help move them towards that college readiness benchmark because of when that assessment is. We do give the pre-ACT as freshmen, or we have given the pre-ACT as freshmen for the last several years. It is a modified version of the ACT, but we give it as freshmen and it really isn't a good predictor in terms, it is a predictor, we just haven't used it very well in terms of looking at it for college readiness. So when you look at SAT, where, like I said, pre-ACT has the pre-ACT nine and then the ACT we give as a junior year. The SAT actually is an entire suite of assessments. It starts in the eighth grade. There's a PSAT eight, a PSAT nine, PSAT ten, eleven, and then you give the SAT and then the end of their junior year. All of these assessments are vertically aligned. So if you take the PSAT eight, the score that you receive on that PSAT eight can be correlated directly to a score on the SAT. So if you look at the college readiness benchmarks, four eighty for English and five thirty for math, they've scaled it back so we can see what those college readiness benchmarks would be on any of the assessments from eighth through PSAT eleven. So what happens is we now have markers starting in eighth or ninth grade, depending on when we give the assessment to college readiness benchmarks. And the reporting that comes out of SAT allows us to do a deeper dive and say, okay, what are some of those areas that our students need to be, need additional support on? In addition, the SAT, English writing and, English reading and writing is actually more closely aligned to the Ohio standards than the ACT. So the SAT is directly aligned to the Common Core framework, Common Core standards, while Ohio doesn't use exactly the Ohio, the Common Core standards, they are a framework and there's a greater correlation. And so what you see is students are, across the state, have higher college readiness benchmark scores on the SAT than they do in the ACT. In addition, starting with the PSAT eight, there is actually an AP potential report. So from our scores that we receive from students that take the PSAT, we can see how likely, what they do in an AP course. And we offer a wide variety of AP classes, so we could potentially look at students that may not sign up for AP and say, you want to know what? You really do have the potential to take this class. So it's additional information that we can use from the assessments. So for nineteen twenty, with this idea of how our assessments are being used, the PSAT is given in October, every year it's a national assessment. This year it's October sixteenth. We would give the PSAT to ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders. In December, students receive their scores, students receive their scores electronically through college board. The district then receives scores as well through a score report, typically after students receive their scores. And what's nice about the PSAT is students can take their scores directly into Khan Academy. And what happens is when you put your PSAT scores into Khan Academy, it gives you a personalized learning module for the SAT. So a junior in January sits down, we put their PSAT scores into Khan Academy. From January to April, students are able to go through those modules that are personalized based upon their scores prior to them sitting for the SAT in April. Students that consistently use Khan Academy, it's about ten to fifteen minutes a day per area, so you would think about anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes for both math and ELA. On average, scores go up a hundred to two hundred points. And then the SAT school day would be in April. It actually lands on one of the state testing days. And so when we talked about a modified testing calendar prior, the juniors would be sitting and taking the SAT on one of the days that freshmen and sophomores would be taking a state test. So when we talk about the CIP, we mentioned before, we want to graduate students who are college and career ready. So this is our long-term goal. We want to have, we want to increase our number of students that are college and career ready. So we want to be able to show increased scores of those college readiness benchmarks, that five eighty and the four thirty, or five thirty and the four eighty. When we look at this and the new graduation requirements that came out for the class of twenty twenty-three, one of the new graduation requirements are seals. Students are to earn certain seals, whether it be a bilinguacy seal, a Ohio means job seal. One of them is actually a college readiness. So one of the seals that students can earn on their diploma is whether, whether or not they've met the college readiness scores on the ACT or SAT. So when we look at the suite of assessments, it allows us to start tracking and to start monitoring and start helping support students earn those college readiness scores. Because this is a change, there needs to be some support for teachers. We've been giving the ACT, the ACT is a common assessment, the language is pretty much unknown. So looking at teachers, I actually am starting tomorrow, just talking about what is the difference between ACT, SAT when scores come back, have conversations about what those scores look like. There is significantly more reporting through the college board's online portal that actually provides item analysis. So in addition to how they're doing on strand, specific questions and how those students did on those questions. Counselors, additional support for counselors with those AP potential reports and how are we using those PSAT scores starting in the ninth grade? And lastly, helping parents understand the difference between ACT and SAT. You know, SAT was once known as a, a post-assessment. It really isn't anymore. It's accepted at all public schools in the state of Ohio, along with the majority, I think there's only a handful, less than five that do not accept, that public or private universities do not accept the SAT. So just kind of helping them understand the difference between the ACT and the SAT. So at this time, I'll open the floor for any questions or comments.
I see that the grade eight is also a potential, we're starting with grade nine, so our ninth grader will take this in October.
Our current ninth graders will take it in October, yes.
And is the eighth graders, do they have an option to take it on their own or have it, is that being offered this year?
That still is an ongoing conversation. The PSAT eight is not a national assessment, we can offer it at any time. There are some lockout weeks that we're not allowed to give it, but we can pretty much give the PSAT eight anywhere from September to April, end of April. It's been an ongoing conversation with Dr. Hamilton and Mrs. O'Leary at middle school.
Just a little bit more about what you're just wrapping up saying, there's what, five private institutions that maybe don't take the SAT? SAT is more coastal test. How about the balance of Midwest? What are you seeing or hearing from the university standpoint around acceptance of the SAT versus the ACT?
Really, when you look at any university, they post scores for both. When you talk to the college, when you look at Naviance, which is our, sorry, there's this slide that keeps moving. When you look at any of our, Naviance is our platform that we use for, I just lost my common app, it really is, it takes both scores, whether it be, there, there are so many, like it takes.
Essentially, we're not eliminating.
No, historically the perception is ACT has been an in-state test, and SAT was required if you wanted to go to school out of state. And we have kids taking both within the school district. So it's not a huge transition. The biggest benefit to the school district is the vertical alignment that gives access beginning in eighth grade that actually longitudinally can use for data analysis with the other reporting mechanisms that SAT now has. Interestingly enough, within the last two weeks, we received emails from ACT. There's a brand new suite coming out for grade eight because of what states are doing. But all, and I'll just go back to one of the previous questions, where you went, Mike. Beyond just, I would say, the three states that surround us have transitioned, it's a state requirement to take the SAT. They've done it for many of the reasons that we've been looking at. For the sheer data reporting and availability of the analysis is very different from the college board for what SAT makes available versus what ACT now has. But again, ironically, in the last two weeks, we're getting inundated with emails from ACT about, here's the newer, better, bigger ACT suite that's going to become available because they're losing states based upon what they can prove through the data points to where Paul went. The new option that ACT is creating an ACT for grade eight has been the longest existed in existence for PSAT. And because of where we're trying to go for the academic achievement goals as well as the benchmark goal for college readiness, knowing that this new graduation requirement that's coming online for twenty twenty-three has benchmark seals that are required, kids have to have two seals in order to graduate. So if we're trying to lay the foundation for the current ninth graders, what else do we do to support you, to get you to these new requirements? And this just makes practical sense. It's not going to hurt anyone because we still have a significant population of students at New Albany High School that do go out of state for college and they have to take the SAT, it is a requirement.
How many of our students take both?
Surely do you know the percentage off the top of your head? I don't know, sitting here, just.
I'd say last year, our graduating twenty nineteen class, we might have had sixty to eighty students take the SAT, somewhere around that range here.
So it's plus or minus out of three hundred and seventy-five? So, and again, most of them are going to out of state schools. That's the reality.
How about other schools that we've based against, which test the administration?
So if you look in central Ohio, we have Westerville, the Hannah, Dublin, Hilliard are all giving the SAT. Hilliard is coming on board for this particular school year. Indian Hills and Shuren Falls are also giving that SAT.
So several of the highest achieving school districts from upstate are SAT. So that was also part of the research that was done. So it's really just, we have to give the assessment, it's a requirement by state statute, it's just making a transition to go from ACT to SAT.
No, it's great. I definitely love the idea of capturing the data and being able to help the students prepare and be successful.
Well, the Khan Academy suite's a whole nother option that ACT can't currently compete with. Again, personalized so that Paul gets his ACT or SAT scores back and then he can actually go into Khan, enter that from the test window to the test window and actually have access to four to five months of planned enrichment or intervention, depending on Paul's score and likely enrichment, so that he can actually do better the next time he takes the SAT. So we have to do parent education, so we're just going to, that's all part of this because we have to help people understand. But it's just the reality of making the transition, but we think it's in the best interest of our kids. So it will be a change for two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty. But again, we think it's a positive change that we can substantiate based upon all the data and analysis that Jesse's done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elias. Your key is, did we talk to you right? Good evening. So on the Board of Education agenda this evening, we actually have an action item for the Board of Education to take, action to enter into lease agreement that's been proposed by the city of New Albany. So I'm going to take a step backwards to help you get to the point where we're actually taking action related to a lease agreement. So as you may be aware, over the course of the last eighteen to twenty-four months, there's been active conversations within our greater community related to the construction of an amphitheater and the solicitation of private donations through the New Albany Community Foundation to try to help support expanding the arts in New Albany, specifically in relationship to an amphitheater. So there was money that was provided in the last state biennial budget, there was a million dollars that was given to the city of New Albany to contribute towards the future development of an amphitheater. And after that first million, the New Albany Community Foundation was very active in trying to continue to solicit private or other public donations towards the development of an amphitheater. Pleased to share with you tonight that last Monday at City Council, we could go, it was proposed to move forward as a formal project. So this is where we now get involved because I know the Board of Education's aware of this, but the public may not be aware of this. The physical location of the amphitheater is actually going to be on school district property. That's the purpose of tonight's action item that's requested to the Board of Education. The city of New Albany will eventually be the owner of the amphitheater. However, it's starting through the New Albany Community Authority. So you might remember, when the McCoy was actually built ten years ago as a partnership between the city, the township, and the school district, it actually went through the construction process with the New Albany Community Authority. So the New Albany Community Authority will again be the, going through the process to construct the amphitheater. And it's going to physically be located between New Albany Middle School and the McCoy Center for the Arts. So it's the green space adjacent to Dublin Ramble Road. That property is owned by the school district. So tonight on the board agenda, based upon the work with the city over the course of the last probably six months with Mr. Stefanoff and members of his team, we've effectuated a lease agreement for fifty years with the city of New Albany, between the city of New Albany and the Board of Education, to allow the city to construct through the New Albany Community Authority. Once it's constructed, ownership would be transferred to the city of New Albany. And the city of New Albany will become responsible for actually ownership of the facility and maintaining and operating the facility in cooperation with other entities, but they are the owner. Current conversations, much like the McCoy, it could end up being Kappa that becomes the managing partner of the facility, similar to what we do currently within the pre-owner's agreement related to the GDB McCoy Center for the Arts. So as you can see in the physical green space, the construction's actually in the center point between the middle school and the GDB McCoy Center. It will fit on that green space with some infringement into our parking lot for the first row. So the dead end, head end parking in the first row will be impacted because of the current design related to the loading dock. So there's at least eight parking spaces that will be eliminated within that specific space on district property that we're in agreement with, based upon the capacity within the lot. We feel comfortable that it's not creating any hardship to the school district and we'll move forward with the design through MKSK that the city's proposing through the New Albany Community Foundation and the community authority at large. On the next slide, this is the actual physical rendering of the amphitheater, so you can actually see a picture of what it's going to look like in the proposal. It is a seven million dollar plus or minus facility that will fit within that green space, based upon the ten percent grade coming off of Dublin Ramble Road, again, all the way back into the middle school parking lot. And this is the middle school parking lot back here, the middle school sits here, GDB McCoy sits here. The intent is there'll be connectivity between the McCoy Center and the amphitheater once it's put into the physical green space, so that people can traverse back and forth between the two facilities based upon weather. Current conversations, based upon the discussions I've had with the city of New Albany and Craig Moore at the New Albany Community Foundation, is that we're prepping for construction to begin in September. So construction currently in all conversations would begin in September and it's on accelerated schedule to be completed in August. And it's on an accelerated schedule to be completed in August of two thousand twenty. So it is a one calendar year project from start to finish, provided all goes well. So we are prepped right now. So if you've been in the McCoy Center parking lot today for the middle school, because it will reopen tomorrow with the opening of Dublin Ramble Road, the last two rows of that parking lot are currently closed. We're prepping for the fact that that will become construction staging because the intent is that once the construction on the facility actually begins, Dublin Ramble Road will remain open. So the roadway will be open during the entire construction project. To allow that to happen, we gave up forty-plus parking spaces in the parking lot, knowing that one row was already going to be impacted. And based upon current parking capacity in that lot, we were able to give them the additional row for construction staging as part of the project. So the interior look, this is just a broad-based look. So you can actually see the pergola and what's happening within the plaza itself, the amphitheater and the stage seating that's going to be available. This is just one of the renderings that MKSK has provided through Mr. Stefanoff just to have some picture of what it's going to start to look like as the city of New Albany and the New Albany Community Foundation move forward with this. It was unanimously approved by City Council. Marlene Brisk is here this evening as a council member. I'm confident that she would be happy to answer any questions you may have that would be directed towards City Council and not me. But I would be happy to give any background information as well. But the action item on tonight's agenda is actually to execute to move forward so that construction can begin in September to agree to a fifty-year lease with the city of New Albany to use the green space between the McCoy Center and the middle school for the terms of ten dollars. We basically are executing the same lease agreement that we have for the middle school baseball fields that sit adjacent to the intermediate school that we have for the city of New Albany. So it's really the reciprocity of the agreement we currently have to give them green space for in turn in Khan green space that we also use for interspecific athletics for middle school. So we have a great partnership. I highly recommend that we move forward. It's a great project for our community. It will benefit the arts in New Albany as well. Our students will have access to the amphitheater. That's been part of the conversation that's been envisioned and hopefully create an arts festival in the future in New Albany that specifically uses Rosemont Park, the amphitheater, the McCoy Center, and school district property for a future arts festival that will be coming to New Albany. With that, I'm going to be quiet. If you have any questions for me or questions for Mrs. Brisk, since she happens to be sitting here as a council member.
So the board should get again.
Great community. Beautiful theater. All right, next on the agenda are board policies. So you have a significant list of board policies. These are part of my summer reading and updates and activities. So we're in the two thousand series. You have three board policies specifically for review that have annual statutory or by annual statutory requirements for review. So we fulfill that obligation through the work that's been completed within the last month. We have several policies related to the two thousand series for board policy for minor revisions or name changes based upon statutory changes or updates, both from the state of Ohio or from the feds, in order to continue to be eligible for the minimal funding that we did receive from those entities. And then lastly, based upon changes in statute, there are four policies that are actually moving forward for rescindment from the board policy itself. So again, there's lots of things tonight in the two thousand series related to board policy. There's minimal changes. Some of it is wordsmithing just based upon statutory wording that changed that we had to update policies for. But we have done a comprehensive review of the two thousand series and they are presented this evening for your information review and action at the next formal meeting. Any questions? With none, we will move on to our first opportunity for public participation. And with no one to participate, we will move on then. Super ten items. So can I get a motion, please, on super ten items?
So moved.
Second, Mr. Bush, Mr. Sire. Thank you. So letter A this evening is personnel. These are senior employee action items for the start of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. They include the hiring of certified non-teaching or exam personnel to fill vacancies that we've been working on in the course of the last month since we met early in July. It's actually a fairly extensive personnel list just because we have not met for nearly four weeks. So all those personnel action items are coming forward this evening for your actions. We will be successful in starting the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. We are still actively looking for food service workers and Eagles Nest workers. We hire Eagles Nest to the Educational Service Center in central Ohio. We need approximately seven more people for before and after school care that we are in the market for. And as of this morning, we have at least seven openings in food service. And then we had a late resignation this afternoon for an educational assistant. So it's just the reality of hiring. So we are not fully staffed for two thousand nineteen, twenty. We have substitutes lined up for Thursday and Friday. And open, active interviews will continue. Under general business this evening, you have approval of senior waivers as well as the approval of foreign exchange students. We have four students joining us currently. There's a fifth one in the pipeline that we're waiting for final approval on based upon clearance of the visa. But I believe she will still be here by Monday. The four countries currently represented are Switzerland, Denmark, Norway, and Germany, and they have host families here in New Albany. You have approval action items for the purchase of a seventy-seven passenger school bus as well as two additional special needs buses. The two special needs buses are planned for through IDAB federal funding. And then the seventy-seven passenger bus was part of the PI general revenue purchase that was planned for by the school district. The other action items are standard related to student teaching agreements and/or student placements. We have an MOU with National Geographic that's on the agenda this evening. Thanks to the efforts of Sandy Reed at the E3 Lab, she's become a National Geographic Society certified teacher. And we have the opportunity to host GeoInquiry for thirty-plus teachers on our school campus this year as a result of her success and her recognition by National Geographic. So it's an incredible professional development opportunity that National Geographic is providing for our teachers that will hopefully benefit our students. The approval of the ground lease for the amphitheater, as we spoke about, as well as the approval of the two thousand nineteen, twenty bus stops across the school district. I will note that in accordance with Board of Education policy, based upon the capacity of the fleet, I am recommending the continuation of eligibility for all grade through five, K through five students. Regardless of the two-mile rule, because of capacity on the buses, we will continue to transport all students K five for two thousand nineteen, twenty. And all students grade six through twelve will adhere to the two-mile radius required by board policy. Letter C this evening for board resolution. It's a recommendation from Ms. Jenkins and myself. We go through the competitive bid process for energy services to the school district. We're recommending an extension of the award to direct energy business based upon the competitive bids that were received in cooperation with the other school districts that participate in the competitive bid that goes out to all the different electrical companies to see who will actually get our energy business. Our recommendation is that direct energy services continue to receive that award based upon the competitive bid that was received. Letter D is an update to board policy. And letter E are the transportation reimbursements for payments in lieu of. These are the students that we did not transport from private charter not public school districts during the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year that actually filed for the reimbursement that they're eligible to receive under Ohio Advice Code. So upon approval this evening, these persons will receive their payment that we're required to pay two hundred and seventy-five dollars per student for the entire school year because we do not transfer them, because it isn't, transport them, because it isn't practical under the ruling by Ohio Advice Code. Any questions? All right, with no questions, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Numa?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
President McCollum?
Yes. That brings us to our closing items, and I motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Bush, second by Mr. Numa. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Numa?
Yes.
Yes. We are adjourned. Our next meeting is August twenty-sixth and sixth third.